All right, the meeting will begin.
So I'd like to call to order. Like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 10th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Hershey? Roberts?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
He's here.
Yeah. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of January 27th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. We have presentations and public input. I have one public input card from the audience, and this is from Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. They are continually concerned with the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? We have a presentation tonight on the financial forecast. It was in your packet today, and the presentation will be given by Elizabeth Hanon and Don Ho. I did want to introduce this just by saying that we're heading into the message in this forecast, and I'm going to steal some thunder here, but I think it's important to emphasize. The message in this forecast is that we're coming up on fiscal year 2021 in better financial shape than we've been in probably the last five years. Well, not just probably, for sure, in the last five years. We've had three straight years of budget reductions, internal reorganizations, selective revenue increases, but tonight you'll hear that no additional reductions are being recommended for the near future, and that's excellent news. We made budget adjustments totaling, we'll have made, close to $2.5 million in fiscal years 2018 through 2020 to address the structural deficit, to restore public safety pension funding, and to rebuild the general fund reserves. We've established policies to help ensure that our recurring expenditures don't exceed recurring revenue going forward. This will help us maintain a fund balance that's adequate to withstand economic downturn, to help provide for a stable property tax rate, and allow us to respond to natural disasters like the tornado that we had last spring, or unexpected opportunities and needs that appear. Three years ago, our goal was to build a strong financial foundation for the future, and we've had to make many difficult decisions since then in order to reach the goal. We're building resilience as our economy grows, and we're going to be in a better position to address critical needs and take advantage of opportunities as they come along in the future. So I wanted to thank specifically our finance staff, Elizabeth Hanon, Don Ho, every city employee, because they have all worked very hard to implement the policies that you've passed. I want to thank city council members who've made some courageous decisions over the past few years, and I want to thank the public and our government partners for their support and understanding as we worked through our budget challenges and continue to. So, in short, though, I think you should put your sunglasses on, because this forecast is a lot sunnier than it has been in the past few years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
I don't know if I can top that, but we'll go over some of the details. But the mayor's exactly right. I mean, I feel very good about where we're going. This is the best it's been in the more than five years that I've been here at the city. So so in terms of background, as you know, this is the first step in our annual budget process. In the forecast, we focus exclusively on the general operating fund, which is where we pay for most basic city services like police, fire, and most public work services. So the purpose here is to evaluate our financial condition and make high-level decisions about the budget process. And one thing, I'm not sure if the mayor said this, but one thing I really want to point out, and I'm going to say this again later, is that nowhere in this forecast, in any scenario, even the best case, do we assume that there will be any additional hospital property tax included. So regardless of where this goes in the future, I feel like we've kind of weathered that storm. So where we started was with a significant structural budget deficit and a goal to make a $2.5 million correction over three years. We've adopted council policies on limiting recurring spending to 98.5% of recurring revenues, and we've made multiple budget reductions and a few revenue increases over the last few years. So this chart kind of shows you, I'll call this the "how we did it" chart. So it shows you, starting in FY18 with some very small budget expenditure reductions, and then this is cumulative. It goes through 18, 19, 20, and 21, where we have some recently approved revenue increases that will only be fully realized next year. And it shows you that, over that period, we've done a total of about 1.34 million in budget reductions and about 1.15 million in revenue increases, and that basically got us to our 2.5 million. So again, we're now heading into FY21. We're in better shape than we have been for the last five years in next year's budget. We do not expect to make additional budget reductions. On the other hand, we're just kind of in the right place. We also don't have a lot of money for additions to the budget, particularly any that have recurring cost. New economic development and growth of our tax base really needs to be our focus going forward, because that's what's going to keep us in this good place that we finally reached. We have a stable city property tax rate, and we have very little debt. So I always have to give you my disclaimers. We're not hiding a crystal ball in the finance department. We can't really predict the future. There's a lot of things that go into this forecast that are really beyond our control, particularly actions that might be taken by the state legislature. So in this forecast, really, the trends are more important than the details. We just want to focus on trends and kind of determine a general strategy. The goal here is to make sure that we're making timely corrections so that we don't get ourselves into a very bad place in the future. And again, focus on the general fund and no revenues from hospital property taxes anywhere in this forecast. One of the key things that we look at, because it's such a big part of our general fund, is sales tax. And so this chart shows state and home rule sales tax, adjusted for changes in the rate in the home rule tax, and also for the rate of inflation. So you'll see that we had a really long stretch there between, oh, about FY15 and FY19, where we really didn't have much real growth in those revenues at all. Some of that was due to the state imposing a fee on our home rule sales tax collection, but a lot of that trend was driven by the increasing use of e-commerce. So in FY19, the last fiscal year, our inflation-adjusted state sales tax revenue grew by about 2.4%, and home rule sales tax revenue increased by only 0.06%. The projection for FY20 is about 3% higher than what we saw in FY19. The growth in the current year is really looking healthy, which was a pleasant surprise, and that is built into projections going forward. So our likely scenario assumes that our growth in the future will keep pace with the rate of inflation, which is a significant improvement. In FY21, you'll see both state and home rule sales tax ticking up there at the end. So again, we expect the underlying growth rate to be only about 2.2%, which is where we expect inflation to be. But what you're also seeing there is the impact of cannabis sales on sales tax revenue, because those are subject to the state and home rule sales tax in addition to the 3% cannabis tax. And also, there's a relatively small change related to changes in state law for sales tax revenue from e-commerce. And so really, next year, we're expecting about 4.7% growth in sales tax revenue when you wrap it all up together. So I'm going to give this to Don.
So the state continues to divert our local government revenue, and that continues to affect the forecast. So the state diverts 5% of local government share of income taxes, and then the state also imposes a 1.5% administrative fee on home rule sales tax, and this result in a reduction in revenues up about $250,000 in fiscal year 21. And given the condition of the state fiscal crisis, there continues to be a possibility that these diversion may continue and also increase in the future. So we use two primary indicators of fiscal health for this forecast. The first one is recurring expenditure as a percent of recurrent revenue, and this measure our ability to sustain programs and services over the long term, and to ensure that we don't make any commitment or long-term commitments for which funding may not be available in the future. And the city's current policy is budgeting recurring expenditure not more than 98.5% of recurrent revenue. The reason for this is to provide a cushion against modest fluctuations. The second measure that we use is fund balance as a percent of recurring expenditures, and this indicates the city's ability to withstand economic downturn, natural disasters, to finance cash flows throughout a year, to any unanticipated needs or unexpected opportunities. So the city's current policy is maintaining a fund balance of at least 15% of recurrent -- sorry, 15% of recurrent expenditures, and this provides a buffer, but it might not be adequate in the long term. To staff believes that it is unlikely that the best-case scenario will play out, but there's more significant risk that the reality could be closer to the worst-case scenario. In addition, cannabis revenue is difficult to project since it's new and we have no data to work with. Lastly, a recession may occur within the next couple of years. So here's a chart of recurring revenues and expenditures for the likely scenarios. As you can see, there's a big jump in recurring revenues between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, and that's because of new revenue increases that council just recently approved. For the whole forecast period, revenue stays above expenditures. For the whole forecast period, which is positive. However, the gap gets smaller over time, and this indicates that the predicted level of expenditures may not be sustainable without sustained development activity or additional sources of revenue beyond the forecast period. So here's a chart of growth in recurring revenue and expenditures. So in fiscal year 20, growth in recurring revenues is higher than growth in recurring expenditures, again because of the new revenue increases. And starting fiscal year 21, growth returns to a more normal level, and the rate of growth in recurring expenditures outpaced the rate of growth in recurring revenues through fiscal year 25. And so as long as expenditures continue to grow faster than revenues, the city will eventually be in a position of require -- requiring periodic revenue increases or expenditure reductions. So development activity also contributes to closing the gap, and additionally, sustained development activity would be one of the best options for eliminating this structural deficit. So looking at fiscal year 23, and this is where the gap appears to be more narrow, and the reason for this is due to several things. The first is growth in pension contributions, slowdowns, a little bit once we reach a planned level of -- plan level to get to 100% in 20 years. And that's also when TIF II will end, so our property tax revenue will increase. And this is also when we see an increase in income tax and use tax, which are shared on a per capita basis after we have the result from the 2020 census. So this chart shows that fund balance will increase over time in the best and the likely scenario. In the worst-case scenario, fund balance will increase slightly and then start decreasing in fiscal year 23. And in the likely scenario, the city would expect to be above the current policy goal without significant adjustment to the budget. So focusing on the likely scenario, the fund balance is expected to exceed the 15% fund balance goal throughout the forecast period and increase each year after fiscal year 20. In addition, is it quite likely that the 15% minimum balance level is not adequate to deal with a worst-case scenario on unexpected events such as a natural disaster? So after performing a risk analysis based on guidelines provided by the Government Finance Officials Association, or GFOA, a minimum of 25% would be appropriate. So a minimum of 20% appears to be achievable in fiscal year 21, and we would recommend increase that to 25%, perhaps in fiscal year 22. And lastly, any excess fund balance would most likely be allocated to one-time expenditures or building reserves. I would turn this over back to Elizabeth.
You take a question?
Can you -- I just had a quick question on that last graph.
Yeah.
Yeah. At first, when I saw that, I was thinking, well, that's pretty good. It's like a couple million dollars every year, and last year, there's $5 million. That's a lot of one-time expenditures, but this is cumulative, right? So that's $5 million over the five or six years.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Yeah. And we would never, from a practical point of view, build up that much fund balance in the general fund. We have lots of uses for that for capital improvements and other things.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so I'm going to wrap this up by talking very quickly about our recommended strategy. One of the big things that we're seeing as you look in the forecast is the benefit of economic development, and so we need to continue to make economic development a priority that's really going to drive our ability to maintain a balanced budget over the long haul. We are going to recommend some updates to the current financial policies, and we will bring those, I'm thinking it's going to be in March at this point. So we want to increase that minimum fund balance number. And we also will have a recommendation for you on VERF funding that does not require debt financing. And for this year's budget, we will limit increases for current programs and services. Generally, any increases are going to be one-time expenditures. We want to continue to build reserves, and that may not be just in the general fund, but for example, in our retained risk fund. There's also going to be a point where we need to rebuild those reserves, and we will continue to assess opportunities to use alternate methods of service delivery. That's kind of an ongoing project. So that's it.
Any questions? Eric?
What do you mean by that last phrase, alternate delivery methods for services?
So I think we talked about this a little bit last year, but we think as good stewards of public funds, we need to continue to look about whether there are ways that we can do some things cooperatively, perhaps, with other units of government, or sharing services that would just be more -- a more cost-effective way to deliver services. Looking at this forecast, I mean, the reality is if there are new things that we're going -- that we want to do in the future, that's probably our best shot for finding some savings.
Mary Alice?
So you had mentioned that the state allocates a certain percentage of income tax to all municipalities based on population, something of that, some formula like that, but then they hold back 5% and keep it for themselves. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I don't think they would characterize that way, but they make an allocation to the pot that's called the Local Government Distributive Fund, and that's distributed on a per capita basis.
My question is, is the 5% a permanent? Is that something that they pass, that they said this is the way it is, or is it something they have to pass every single year?
I don't think that it's ever been characterized as a permanent change, but it seems to be the fact. So I think it's been in the last several budgets, yeah.
So it's something that's passed with the annual budget at the state level. I'm just trying to figure out, like, if somebody went in the public to contact their representatives and say, please don't short-change our local, how would they do that? That would be a budget process, not a statute, not any kind of rule change?
It's in the package of bills that make the annual budget for the state. So yeah, I mean, you could contact your local legislator and say, hey, I'd like to not have you taking 5% from my local government.
Okay, all right. My second question has to do with the marijuana tax. So I think the estimate was, on the likely scenario, was 7.5 million, roughly $600,000 a month if you average it out.
That's in sales.
Sales, yes, thank you. Do we have any idea, I mean, they've released statewide, how much has been brought in, and they released what, there's 37 dispensaries in the state of Illinois, but do we have any clue?
So that's a fairly educated guess, and our local retailer was willing to share some of his sales projections, which kind of tied with what we expected based on reviewing data from other states for dispensary sales. But it's, I would call it an educated guess, but it's difficult. We'll know much more once, well, specifically, once we expect -- once we start to receive the sales tax revenue. Eventually, we will get the detail for where they break it down to individual retailers. That leg's pretty far behind, so we don't have any of that information at this point. And then, of course, once the local 3% tax kicks in, that'll be the clearest way to see it, because that'll be a standalone revenue in the budget.
Until October, is that right?
Yeah, that tax will be effective in July.
July.
So yeah, October, before we actually see revenue, I expect.
Okay, all right.
State sales, statewide sales of cannabis, recreational cannabis in January were about $40 million.
Yeah, and I would add one thing to that. I mean, there's always the possibility that we might see a second dispensary in Urbana, too, which could push that higher. Right now, we're just counting on the one.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Jared?
Just on that first strategy point of focusing on economic development, we, just as a strategy, we do that because of what it results in five years down the road, not, you know, because, like, we've got two amazing wins that we're going to see come to fruition in 2021, but we won't likely start collecting benefits of that until FY22 or '23.
Yes, correct. But our problem at this point, we've solved the immediate problem. I mean, we're in pretty good shape. Our issue is very long-term, which I think is a good fit for that strategy.
Bill?
So, yeah, speaking of long-term, we still have a lot of capital improvement projects that need to be done, and I guess we're getting kind of into budgeting, and I don't know if we're still going to get an update today on the current capital improvement plan, I mean, street projects and stuff?
I have an update on some of the street projects for you.
I know that over the past year, you know, we've had some staffing shortages and stuff and haven't probably gotten as much done. We definitely have, we'll probably end up with an extra $1 million in the Public Works budget that we didn't spend. So my suggestion would be to just roll that, instead of counting that as extra, just put that into the capital improvement plan for next year, make a transfer, because that's money that we budgeted for Public Works that should have been spent this year, but for various reasons couldn't have been. So whatever's left, instead of just, I don't know, whatever you normally do, I would favor putting that toward capital projects that we've gotten behind on. And then the other point on the census, I know ISR won't be open in time for April for the council, so we'll be missing about 500 people there. So it'd probably be good, as soon as it does open, to try to figure out the best way to get those people counted so that we can get them counted within a couple of years after the census.
That brings up a good point, and a good time for a commercial is the importance of the census. And for everyone to be counted, it's roughly $1,400 a person per year, and much of our revenue is distributed on a per capita basis. So that's why everyone who's living here in late March, April 1st, is counted here, every single person. So, and we're making a big push toward that. Any other questions? I would say normally, when we do the forecast, we've also given kind of an update on general city activities. We decided there was so much to report this time. In the interest of time, we're focusing on the forecast tonight, and then we'll do, hope to do more of the state of the city in May as we go into budgeting. So, thank you very much. Next up is reports of the standing committees, and it's the Committee of the Whole, and Eric Jacobson is standing in for Sharice Hershey as committee chair.
And Eric Jacobson is practically looking for his agenda. Oh, okay. Oh, it's on paper. Okay. And I believe that the first, the consent agenda actually is vacant. Is that true? There's, it's an empty agenda, okay. So we can pass on that. And on the regular agenda, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2020-02-003, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1407 West Besseman Street, Urbana, Illinois, to Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County.
I'll second it.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2020-02-004, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, namely, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for Satara Indian Cuisine Incorporated, doing business as Satara Indian Cuisine, 114 South Ray Street, Urbana.
Second.
Jared?
Yep.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Eric. Reports of special committees? Dennis?
Yeah. Just wanted to update you a little bit on some activity in the Sister Cities Committee. We're going to be having a ribbon-cutting at Willard Airport here on Wednesday afternoon, or morning, actually, February 12th at 11:30 PM, in conjunction with the UBA and the Director of Willard Airport. And what we're going to be doing is placing a new display banner, advertising our connection, global connections in Urbana at the airport with Sister Cities around the world. And we appreciate very much the Director of the Airport's willingness to place this display up in the airport. I think it's really appropriate, and quite a few different regional and major airports honor the Sister Cities programs of their communities, so we're happy to take pay to make that part of our community as well. So it's an open thing, and anybody wants to come by, 11:30 in the morning on Wednesday, please stop at the airport. And I think that the city's going to put out a PSA for that as well.
Thank you. Reports of officers, Carol's going to give an update on three or four street projects that you could see in the neighborhoods.
Yep, and I just want to give a shout-out to the folks on the engineering side of Public Works who have been working hard, and our supplemental services, supplemental engineering services contractor, Farah Graham, who've been helping us out quite a bit in order to move these projects forward. So we have two projects. So we have two projects that are funded in part with CDBG dollars, and one is the Dr. Ellis Neighborhood Project, where we're going to be doing some upgrading of, of curbs and sidewalks and, and sidewalk ramps and some street repair and so forth, as well as the Kinch Street Lighting Project. Those are both scheduled to start in April, and they should be done by July. So those are on track. We also have the Vine and Washington Pavement Reconstruction Project. That one needs to be done because of its proximity to the middle school. That needs to be done in that very narrow window of time when school is not in session. And so that's scheduled to start on the 8th of June. We have this very precisely timed, and it needs to be done by the 7th of August. So, so that's on track as well. We have the EMCOR Phase 5 project that will go out for bid before the end of February. And then we're on the Lincoln and Springfield resurfacing, we will probably, we're, we're going to be watching construction costs and so forth, but we'll probably go out for bid in the fall with that, get some work done on the, on the concrete side of things like curbs and so forth, and then do the paving part of that project in the spring. So we have a lot going on, but I think we're, we're getting things moving that had, had been a little bit stalled, so really proud of the folks working on this.
Absolutely. And the neighborhood meeting for the Gather Project is Wednesday?
It's Thursday, I believe.
It is Thursday. It's Thursday at 4:30.
Four, is it 4:30?
Yeah.
At Phillips.
Phillips Recreation Center.
4:30 to 5:30. Okay, and that's being hosted by Rowan Russell, Russo, who's the contractor for the project.
Yes. And if anybody had any questions about any of the capital projects?
Yeah, I was just hoping you could send a, kind of a list and email so that we had a reference.
Sure.
Thank you. Dates and projects, that kind of stuff.
I will do that. Perfect.
Yeah, and I wasn't criticizing the staff that are there. I'm sure they're working hard and, you know, there's plenty to do without extra capital improvement, you know, piling things on existing staff. I did have a question on the Washington reconstruction. Originally, that was budgeted as a resurfacing, and then we talked about doing a complete reconstruction. So did it end up as a complete reconstruction?
Yes. Yes, so you'll see a budget amendment on that. And one of the things that we're doing, and I, and again, I have to give staff credit for this, is that was going to be a mix of dollars, local dollars and motor fuel tax dollars. And we've, we now have a new approach, which is we're trying to, since motor fuel tax dollars, those plans have to be approved by IDOT, and that adds more process and more time. Where possible, we're trying to limit those projects that require motor fuel tax dollars to ones that maybe already have to go to IDOT. And so we're going to be shifting some things around, so the Vine Street, Vine and Washington Project can go forward this year because we're using all local money.
And then...
So you'll see a budget amendment for that when we have the cost estimate.
I think at one time, Public Works mentioned that it met the warrants for a traffic light there, but it wasn't feasible really to put a traffic light there. So with a total reconstruction, it's kind of, I mean, it seems to me like that's a, you know, you're reconstructing it for a 30-year time period or 20-year time period or something. Would that rule out putting lights there if it demands it in 10 years? Or would it, I mean, I'm thinking, would it make more sense to just do a resurfacing if it's going to be something that we have to reconstruct in 10 years for lights or something?
Well, we're talking primarily about the reconstruction being the road surface and the curbs, and so I think one of the biggest obstacles for putting the, the traffic signal in is that we would have to acquire private property. And, and there's a substantial expense. So I think that's something that we can look at over time, but given that the road is falling apart quickly and we have this window that we can get in, we, we want to, we want to move on that reconstruction project, but not lose track of the traffic signal. It just can't move forward at the same pace.
But we are enhancing the stop signs.
That we are. This will be a bigger-than-normal stop sign, and it will have lights around, LED lights around the outside of it, so nobody can miss it.
Okay.
If they're looking.
Definitely needs, okay, thanks.
Jared.
Oh, one thing that I just caught my head because of earlier conversation and then capital improvement projects, do we not have some city dollars tied to the hotel redevelopment? To do their parking lot or something along those lines, or the street improvement?
We had done the, the improvements to that little section of Green Street that extends east of Race. We did that last year.
Okay, is that the only thing that we had tied to that?
In terms of infrastructure that was specific to the hotel?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And we removed that planter as well.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. I couldn't remember if that was the only one or not, or if that was something we'd be looking forward to next year?
No, but they're looking forward to EMCOR Phase 5 being done.
Yes, okay, thanks.
And we, we've received a draft copy of the analysis of the intersection of Main and Vine, the pedestrian, the pedestrian safety, I'm not sure, what do we call it? The...
It's really just a, an evaluation of the intersection against industry standards in a variety of ways. And once that's final, then we'll bring it to council.
That should be coming in a few weeks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Carol? New business, we have two items. One is a resolution number 2020-02-011R, which is a resolution accepting a census, census implementation grant from the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. And that's, Sheila, did you want to speak to this, or?
The Urbana Public Health received a sum of money for this region, I think there's five counties, and then individual agencies were able to apply as a subrecipient. So Urbana staff identified renters and students as our hard-to-count population, and so we requested funding to help reach out to that group of people. And it is a reimbursement grant.
And the amount is 56...
404.
56,404. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to move approval of resolution number 2020-02-0011R, a resolution accepting a census implementation grant from the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District.
Second.
That was Jared.
Jared. I soon won't have this problem. Regrettable. Any discussion? Mary Alice.
So this grant is for $56,000 for staff time and materials. Does that mean the city's going to be hiring part-time people?
No, we're using existing staff, and then we had budgeted two interns, but we have a very short period of time, so we're just kind of offsetting our time that we're spending on it for...
So is there any, any, anything that will be delayed on the...
I don't think so. This week, we plan on, you know, if this gets approved tonight, we're going to buy tablets. We're moving forward as if we've got the money, because it's too important to the city to not participate and, and get the grants, so.
So how are you going to be using tablets to, to be able to capture students?
And we're going to set up hubs, and so we're really more focused on renters. We're doing education outreach to the students, along with the University of Illinois, but we assume most students are renters too, so if we focus on that broader population. So right now, our plans are to order tablets this week, do, work with the library to do hubs, to have people come in, be able to look at the forms, fill them out there where they are. At the library, we're also going to have the kiosk out here available for people to come in and be able to complete the census here if they'd like. And then finally, we're going to do two major mailings, one the first part of March, just kind of saying, you know, look out, your, your form's on the way and you count. And then we're going to do another drop right after spring break to just another reminder that, hey, this, this information's coming, and it's important to Urbana that you complete the census.
Is there any possibility of setting up stations within university areas such as PAR, at the Union? You have to kind of go where the students are, right?
Right, right, yeah. And we are working closely with the University of Illinois on that cooperation and seeing where we can all work together to capture that.
Okay. It would be, students don't generally check, like, physical mail?
Right.
So if we're really trying to reach out to students, they're...
Right, and was it Carol, and I might get this wrong, but they were going to send an email blast out to the, to all of the students and along those same timelines, because we all know the students, you know...
Will there be a link in the email? I'm just thinking, you have to make it easy for students, right?
Totally agree. There will be a link. Right, and we're, we're going to be double-checking to not, you know, to make sure, like, don't just tell us in general what you're going to do, tell us specifically what you're going to do so we can give them some advice. But the students that live in residence halls will be counted in a sort of centralized process.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, and we have good relationships through the fire department with people that are living in the, the Greek houses, and we'll be leveraging those relationships. So, so I, I think we're actually in pretty good shape with the students.
I mean, you can, there's, there's hotspots, right? So there's CRC in Urbana, I mean, you have to go where people are congregating, so I appreciate the information on PAR and Daniels and Orchard Downs and so forth. Orchard Downs counting that?
We're going to double-check, we're, we're double-checking everything.
Okay.
And the university is an active partner in this count process, so Regional Plan Commission, City of Champaign, Savoy, Urbana, and the University of Illinois are all working cooperatively to try to count as many as we can.
And the New American Welcome Center.
Township, will they have a, a station?
Yep.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, even Urbana.
You guys have it under control, I just...
Yeah. Urbana Neighborhood Connections is also a subrecipient of this grant, so.
And as far as staff, Wendy in the clerk's office, Elizabeth, Alyssa and Sheila and Grants and Bridgette Breughan, our communications person, have been spending a great deal of time working with Jason as well, and they just completed four 30-second spots that we're going to start running everywhere in Mandarin, Spanish, French, and English, basically getting the message out as well. So there's, there's, you know, multimedia approach. Eric.
You didn't mention canvassing door-to-door, is that because you're not going to do it, or?
The census actually hires people to do that individually.
Ah, okay.
The way it works, and I just, if you had listened to my newsletter, you would know all this, but I talked for five minutes this month, but the, the mailing goes out in late March and the reminding people to go online, so they're hoping to get most people to respond by going online and answering the questions online. And then if people don't respond, that'll be followed up with two or three mailings after that. And then if people still don't respond, that's when they do the door-to-door to follow up with all the non-respondents. The challenge here is that the thing, the initial mailing goes out while, when the students leave for spring break, so they're not here anyway. And, and then they're gone, many of the undergraduates are gone by mid-May, and the follow-up doesn't really start until about mid-May. So the, the students are a key, a key factor. But, but yeah, the door-to-door is after the initial mailings to kind of sweep up the people who haven't responded, and they're still looking for canvassers who will be paid $20.50 an hour if people are looking for a part-time job for a few months this summer.
Why are you looking at me?
I was thinking of, I was thinking of people who have college students, who are looking, who need to be employed.
Any courses, students?
Complex, or?
Sorry.
No, I'm playing with you.
Okay, where are we?
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, is there, can, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes, indeed.
Hazen?
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is ordinance 2020-02-006, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this allows us to accept this grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin? Yes, that motion passes. And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.